To order, we have one item on our agenda. And that is a presentation and recommendation from the municipal park committee, Monica and Chad.
All right, if we both stand here, can you hear me okay? Everyone?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Monica Converse, resident of Polk City, and I'm joined here with Chad.
Chad Hlebnik, also resident of Polk City.
And we're going to kind of just briefly walk you through the process that we've been involved with over the last six months and what our recommendations are going forward. So just a brief background for anyone in the audience that isn't aware of kind of where we've left off with the municipal park project. A little bit of history before I get started. The city purchased the undeveloped 57 acres from that property in 2000 for a price tag of about $800,000. In 2021, the city and that properties entered into a development agreement defining responsibilities related to the property. And also in 2021, the city hired Confluence, which is a landscape architecture firm, to create a master plan for the project. The master plan concept originally started out at a price tag of about $25 million, but over a couple of years, it was revised to decrease and bring that total budget project budget amount down to about $12 million. Last fall, the project went out for a $10 million bond referendum vote. So 10 million of that funding for the $12 million project would have been through the bond, another million for a capital campaign, and another million for this from the city. The bond unfortunately did not pass. It needed 60% vote to pass, and it received nearly 53% of the vote. Though this was disappointing, it was a sign that there is momentum, so we wanted to keep that moving forward since this is a much-needed community amenity. So kudos to the city for not letting it sit stagnant, just wanted to try to take a different approach. So that's where we came in. So next steps were after the bond vote last fall is the mayor appointed some committee members. So there were 16 committee members who met on this what we called municipal park committee. So it consisted of Mayor Carjun, council members Walters and Walter and Otis, city staff, Chelsea Huesman and Jason Tran, and then community members from a variety of backgrounds, community involvement and opinions towards the project, which included Ron Anderson, Brittany Blythe, Jim Bowersox, myself, Monica and Chad, Larry Jablonski, Melissa Keys, Chris Robertson, Laramie Lynn Sandquist and Adam Beat. So we met monthly over the last six months for about an hour and a half to two hours each time and did a variety of topics and activities. We started things off with a site tour, go see kind of where what the property is looking like, where it was left off last winter. The next meeting, we took a deep dive into the park site plan concept, which was from Confluence, the designer. Just were able to bring in Confluence and ask a lot of detailed questions about different scenarios and, you know, kind of what goes where. We also had a meeting, a session with Renaissance Group, who helped us in the past with the prior bond referendum, the feasibility study, and also touched on kind of inform the group on what it takes to ensure a successful capital campaign. We also had a lot of research and discussion around potential grant funding opportunities. And then we heard from some presentations from local user groups, including the United Soccer League, Polk City Little League and Parks and Rec departments. So what we learned, sorry, should have had on that slide to begin with. What we learned, there is already obviously a significant investment by the city for this property related to the land itself, the rough grading that's taken place, the commitment to a water tower, regional bike trail, and future Northeast 7th Street through this property. We also learned that bond exhaustion does exist. There was some concerns from the group about what would happen if we did go out for a vote and it failed again, we'd be back at square one. We also learned that capital campaigns and grant opportunities tend to be more successful if there's a demonstration of project commitment and investment already. So it's not a great idea to start with a significant project with these efforts until something has started. And then we heard some really interesting things from the various user groups. So we heard from Little League, Darren Tenable was the representative at that meeting. He gave us some statistics about what their use patterns are. So he said currently they have 32 teams enrolled for the spring. They need 50 practice slots, but when that, when games start, that availability to those practice slots goes down to 18. He really emphasized that their main need is practice facilities. They really struggle to find usable practice space, especially when, you know, all the other things are going on at the soccer complex. And brought an idea forward, which we thought was really interesting of having a quad concept, kind of like what you would see at Triumph Park in Waupiki, if you're familiar, where it's just kind of a four, a chain link fence with kind of four different quadrants where practice could occur. He suggested that would be a really great start at least and relatively affordable. And then no surprise to any of you, but he also, you know, talked about parking being a challenge out of the existing sports complex. Then we heard from North Polk United, so Melissa Keys represented them. She said they currently this last year enrolled about 530 kids in the fall and another 450 this spring. Their existing fields, I'm going to hopefully get this all right, they have currently one U 11 and 12, two U 9 and 10, and three U 5 through 8 at the existing sports complex. They also utilize kind of makeshift facilities at other churches, such as Lutheran Methodist and Lakeside Churches for games and practices. They're very appreciative of that, but just know that that's not probably a long-term solution because those opportunities could go away at any point if, you know, expansions or the churches churches changes change their mind on that space. So their lack of space and congestion has really forced them to get creative with their game and practice times in the meantime. So they, she talked through a few of those things with just staggering game times and things like that to alleviate some of the congestion concerns. And she also brought up the parking at the existing sports complex. She mentioned that going forward, they will need at least four U 5 through 8, two U 9 and 10, two U 11 and one U 19 fields at the new park. She noted that even though that is a little bit different than what you saw in the last version of the site plan concept, the overall general footprint of what was planned at the proposed site remains the same. She said their top priority is just getting flat sites graded out and then grass growing on them as quick as possible. And then we also heard from Jason with Parks and Rec. He currently offers various programs throughout the year, including smart start soccer programs, football, baseball and basketball programs for ages three, three through five. He also offers some sports camps at the existing sports complex and also an adult softball league. He would love to be able to offer additional adult leagues, but currently they don't have the space just with all the other competing demands out there. So that's a little bit of history about the process we went through and some of the needs. I'm going to turn it over to Chad next.
Thank you. You got to hear a lot of great background on what we heard and as we analyzed, you know, what path forward might look like. And I get to talk through what our recommendation was as a committee to try to move this thing forward. After hearing from the user groups and understanding the needs, we thought it was very important just to get something going, get the project growing for the growth of the city, where we're, where we've been, the growth currently, and then, and then the ongoing growth that's coming. So the committee recommends to move forward the portion of the project without a bond referendum and utilize tax increment financing to minimize the tax burden. After hearing from these user groups, we looked at what could be included most cost-effectively. So up here on the slide, you can see what we talked through is to get the regional park parks started, to go out and construct a new soccer field, the parking lot for the soccer, and then a restroom facility out there that would support those soccer fields. And then also out there, have the city start to apply for grants for the splash pad. At the same time out there to construct baseball softball quadrant, so the practice fields that Monica talked about out at the regional park. And then to invest some, some dollars at the current sports complex for needed improvements. This is a quick diagram of what the sports complex would look like to the, to some extent. So really looking at, starting to develop where the soccer fields are up in that northwest corner of the, of the current complex, the parking on the south side of that, and then off to the, to the east of the, the complex is where that proposed quadrant could go for, for the practiced, the baseball softball practice fields. We felt this was the most cost-effective, the soccer fields are your most cost-effective to go put in versus baseball softball. And then that quadrant for practice for baseball softball really met the needs of, or the current needs of the baseball softball Little League. And this also gets this, gets the part going for be ready for future growth. So real quick, want to just talk through the estimates here that we had from our consultants. So the estimated range for the regional park and sports complex to do the work that we talked about, anywhere from three to 3.8 million. Obviously, there's a, there's a range in there as we go through design and budgeting and actual buying this and exactly when it can get bought. We want to get a range of what those costs could look like. And then the obligation the city already has to put Northeast 7th Street in, in the trail, that 1.8 million, so that total investment in the Polk City would be 4.8 to 5.6 million. So our recommendation does not get the whole proposed program done that the bond covered, but it does meet the current needs of the user groups, as we heard from each user group throughout this committee. It also gets the regional park established and started, and that gets us ready for future growth and expansion as the community continues to grow. So this was, as we, as we all talked, this would be our recommendation to the, to the council to move forward with. Questions?
Thanks, Chad. Thanks, Monica. Council?
Yeah, so appreciate everybody's involvement here. We didn't get much insight into where you guys were going and week to week, so I just would love to hear from anybody, you two or others on the committee about the process over, I know you outlined what you did and appreciate that, but I'm, I'm more curious about how it went and how we landed. And I got some other questions on, on the meeting minutes and the votes there at the end, but.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. That was something we should have touched on. So after we had some of those initial sessions where we just kind of got everyone up to speed and, you know, regarding the concept and, you know, the site tour and all those early initiatives, we spent the, kind of the last half of our meetings talking through different scenarios and voting as a committee about, okay, you know, what do, what do we do? Like if we're going to have to pick something, you know, and piece this apart, what, what do we want to prioritize? And overwhelmingly, the votes were towards soccer because we felt like that was the most immediate need and probably the most cost-effective to get implemented, just to get something started out there. And then later on, as we dug into that, we did further votes and additional meetings about things like, you know, do we prioritize a restroom facility or not? Do we, what about the baseball softball quad, that kind of stuff too? And all voted on that. So we, the voting results were tallied in that report that you all should have received. So anything else you want to add to that process?
No, I think, I think that covered it. It was a, there's a lot of good discussions and kind of not banter, but just good discussion amongst the committee on which way to go. But really, as we got into the voting, it was pretty overwhelming, the unanimous on which way, the direction that we wanted to head, so.
I think the general consensus was too, is just we want to get something started. We know this doesn't address all of the needs out there that were outlined in the grander plan, but this can at least address some of the immediate needs and get started, get the momentum, keep the momentum going. So that was kind of the feeling that we all, most of us shared. So I don't know if anyone that was on the committee behind here wants to speak up and add anything to it, but we have a few members here.
Anything else?
Ron, somebody's asking you to talk and you're not. Somebody's asking you to talk and you're not. I'm just a little bit floored that.
So Ron, if you're going to talk, and you're welcome to do that, we'd just like you to come forward so people can hear you in the microphone for the. That'd be the same for anybody else.
I just want to say I appreciate everybody that, that served on the committee and the leadership we had and the way the process went through. For a while, I thought, where are we going with this? And at the end, it all came together. We had some votes, we agreed on a lot of stuff. I liked a lot of things that were said and are going to happen, first of all. It's not going to be, I hope the public's not disappointed, it's not going to bang there's a, there's a regional park sports complex. It's not going to happen that way. We're going, we took kind of a, correct me if I'm wrong, but a pay-as-you-go approach and do what we could afford for a while and try to hold the, the cost of the bond issue down, if I'm correct on saying that. That's what I took away from the meeting, and I enjoyed being here and serving with the rest of them. And this is something that's near and dear to me because I've said for a long time, when I first moved to Polk City, we had two, two baseball teams, one field. And we went for years with that same field. Then we got the sports complex out there, and we're still, we've fallen short of something I feel guilty about for serving on the council as long as I did and not keeping up with the youth of Polk City because they deserve it. The kids of this community deserve it, deserve a place to play and safe surroundings. But other than that, I'm very pleased with the way things went.
Council, anything of former council member Ron Anderson? He's walking away, so don't ask him questions because he won't be there to answer. So I, this means you have to have questions. I mean, I just didn't know.
So my follow-up question for whomever, walk me through the, the final vote. So if I'm looking at the first vote, and items one and two, each got four and five votes, and then, and those were baseball softball, item seven got 12, which to me, those are all field, field votes. So I'm lumping them together initially, which is almost, you've got 21 votes of the 24, if I'm doing my math right, for field space. And then when we go down to the final vote, removing some options and, and putting some cost opinions in there, it seemed to maintain that vote. But just, so when, when you guys had the added context of, of comparing those two options with some cost opinions, seems pretty straightforward to me, but am I, am I tracking with the, am I understanding correctly here?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was pulling it up. So you were talking about the votes in the final meeting?
Yeah.
And that's, yes. So in the prior meeting, we had kind of just, you know, all agreed that soccer was probably the, the top priority, something easy to get started on the project. So the final votes then were, in our last meeting, were related to, were related to the other kind of things that we wanted to make sure were included, you know, like we could build soccer fields, but is there any point in having kind of nice soccer fields if there's not a good restroom facility out there? You know, we could make do, but ultimately, is that the best decision for the community? So that was one of the votes. Another one was prioritizing grant writing for splash pad. We all thought that was, yeah, that received 13 of the votes, so everyone present that day. So that one is kind of a no-brainer. We definitely think the splash pad would be an easy item to try to get some good grant funding for. We also had the vote for the baseball quadrants, and so we wanted to make sure that Little League was getting something out of this and, and knowing that would meet a lot of their immediate concerns out there. And then we also did vote to on just investing some additional resources out at the existing sports complex to, you know, if we're able to offload some of the pressure from soccer, once that's established at the new park, what are some other improvements we can do to some of the baseball softball fields out there, parking, that kind of stuff too? So we thought that was a wise approach and try to maximize some of the existing facilities that we have to while we're at it. Anything else you want to add?
So then the last one, does that, I don't, I'm on, sorry, should have told you this earlier, I'm on the last page of the packet that we got, but the construct concessions are crossed out in restrooms. So is that a vote on the restrooms and concessions or just restrooms?
Just concessions at this point. We, we, yeah, just, we voted just on restrooms. We agreed that like, I think the original concept had it called out as concession stand, knowing just some of the challenges that the user groups have had lately with getting people to even volunteer and run those facilities. We didn't feel like concessions was necessarily a priority, but we have heard that storage is a need, is going to be a need out there. So we were recommending modern restrooms for sure, but then maybe some additional space for storage or future concessions if it becomes warranted.
Okay. Thank you very much. A great presentation. So we, just before we proceed, I did notice some people in the audience, Melissa's here, so I wanted to thank everybody, Laramie's here, and I guess that's who else is here in attendance, Ron's already been forward. So thank you very much for all of your hard work on this. Six months, to ask people to do something for six months is asking a lot. And you all came forward and brought forward a, a great recommendation. So where do we go from here?
Nick or Jeff Walters, do you want to weigh in on anything with the process since you two were on the committee? Is there anything you want to add as council members?
Yeah, I think both Nick and I, as well as Mayor, went in with a pretty open mind and an objective approach that we don't want to steer anyone in any one direction. We want to make sure that everyone has a clear and equal voice. We had some nice discussions, no one got too heated or tempers flared. Actually, quite the opposite. It was, you know, very structured conversations and while we might not have all agreed with the outcome, I think everyone agrees that this is the, the right step forward. It's the first chapter of the sports, the new municipal park. It's another chapter in the sports complex. And if we can move forward on this, it's going to make both, both facilities work much better for our community needs. So really appreciate everyone's help and assistance.
I don't really have anything else additional to say that hasn't already been said. I'm really glad, grateful for everybody's work on this, and I'm excited to try and do something to move this forward, to really get started.
Okay.
So the only thing that I would add is now that we're past the questions piece, just to add my perspective, since you guys are here, validating to, to see the focus on ball field space, I, as a parent of a kid, I, you know, it's easy to see the need when you're in that user group. And so as I understand, this team or this committee was constructed of, of those folks, but others as well. So I, the only question in mind, and I share, doing whatever we can as fast as we can, the only real question is when you get 53% of approval, you didn't get 60, but that's still the majority. So I don't, I think there are some cheaper options and maybe some nice-to-haves here, none of which is, is ball space. And I think finding the right amount to spend, given that middle ground dollar amount is tricky piece, but everything towards the, the least amount of money that gets us the most field space while utilizing the best opportunities at the existing complex as well as the new one. And then I would even include, I still think we should be utilizing Third and Davis and the library as temporary usage spots, probably practice field. So if we need to spend a little bit of money and we can, we can buy five years or seven years or even 10 on, on some of those spots, that's time well spent to alleviate at least the parking or at least the practice needs on those, on those evenings and spread people out. So again, appreciate everybody's work and open to feedback as we vet some of these options further and, and try to do something as, as quickly as we can while being cost-conscious, which is not an easy thing to do.
Your, your comment was echoed at every single meeting. You know, we, we looked at Third and Davis and all the open spaces and tried to stretch the dollar as good as we could. And what you echoed is really the process that we went through, so.
But is that represented anywhere here? I mean, I see $800,000 for sports complex only. Do we have cost opinions on?
We don't.
Okay.
That, that $800,000 is a bookmark. You know, could it go to the sports complex? Absolutely. Could it go to maybe one of those other places? Possibly. I think that's the, that's the next evolution in, in this discussion is we know what we need to do at the municipal park and, you know, those fees are, what we chose, I think, is the best option out there, at least the collective group did. Now it's that remaining dollars that, do we do a loop for, at the sports complex for transportation congestion? Do we make some other improvements to the fields? How do, how do we switch it up? And if we decide, or someone decides that maybe we should do some clearing or some fixing up somewhere else, don't need to spend that much. That's, that's not true. That's really just a placeholder dollar for the potential locations that we could have practice at or, or games for that matter.
Okay, so then would the next recommended step be to vet those options and come forth with them? Because I would be a little bit nervous taking a placeholder figure and borrowing based on that as opposed to coming up with the plan, plugging in the specific dollar amount and moving forward that route? Have we gotten that part? Maybe we haven't.
I think one of our first steps is to figure out what it's actually going to cost us at this point to do some of the other things at the, the regional park. We need to get some more finalized engineering plans, and we can move forward from there. But yes, we should be thinking about what we want to do with that money, where we want to do it, with the bookmarked money, that sports complex, $800,000. Figuring out what exactly is going to be the best spend on that. Is it more parking? Is it a loop? Is it rehabbing the ball fields out there? That is absolutely something we should work on talking about next and not something we spent a ton of time.
Yeah.
Discussing during this.
Okay.
Okay, so what, what are our challenges moving forward? What deadlines are you looking at?
So there are a couple of different processes that I think the city council should begin to think about pursuing. The first process is borrowing of money. If the council is willing to make this a project that is an urban renewal project, the city would need to amend their urban renewal plan and then begin the process to borrow money. My best estimate for a timeline for those two things would probably be three to six months. The city staff has been working on amending our urban renewal plan for a number of months, so that's something, that's a process that we have started. But my best guess would be that would be a three to six month process. I know there's been a lot of conversation on the design of the park. So Confluence was hired to do the master plan back in 2020 after the city purchased the property. And my recommendation would be that the council consider doing a request for proposals that would be qualification-based for engineering. I would suggest that you consider doing as much within one project as possible to get the best pricing for the project. I'm not sure that I would recommend doing the road separate from the park. I would really challenge you all to consider doing it as one project. So a couple of different things, you're talking about needing to do an urban renewal plan amendment. You're talking about if you want to get started soon, we need to start the process to borrow money. And my recommendation on the engineering would be that we do it RFQ for engineering for the park.
So a couple of things, are you saying that the only way to borrow money at our, up to our threshold is through making this an urban renewal area?
Yes.
Okay. So then, do, do we really need new engineering? I mean, there, there are so many different concepts and supplemental engineering work that, is that all throwaway work at this point? We have to do it again, or what am I missing here with past work?
You've only done a master plan to date. You've done a grading plan, but the master plan is very high level. You need to do actual design work for the park now so that the park could be built. No, it's not wasted work, but you are going to have to have a firm design the park so it can be built.
The nuts and molds.
Yes. Yeah.
I guess I, I would, using, we know what the grading is now. We've had a few different concepts. I would prefer, we've asked these folks to spend six months coming up with priorities, and they've done. I think we need to find a path forward that's more immediate than, than another, what did you say, three to- I think we need to find a path forward that's more immediate than, than another, what did you say, three to six months? And even if that's approval for a few hundred thousand or a million or two, I know we talked about 3.6 here for the plan, but, um, I, I just have to believe with all of this cumulative work, and I'm going back to earlier bond votes, that we can leverage a piece of, of what is there, given the grading that's already been done, and get a foot in the door. And then maybe build from there as a more comprehensive plan. But I don't know if, if others see it that way, I just, that, that gives us, want to be able to do something without months and months of planning. Because I, I, I don't know that that's fair, given all the work that's happened over the last six months.
So we have an engineer here, do you want to talk about the difference between the, the what? The master plan and the site plan?
Grading plan.
Grading plan.
Monica, right, the engineer? Chad, Monica and I can, we can do it, yeah.
Yeah, you can come up.
All right, so, um, yes, Chad and I have backgrounds in construction and engineering. So, um, what you've bought so far is a master plan, which is a roadmap for going forward with. It's, um, you know, gives you a kind of high-level cost estimates, a plan to get people excited about and start visualizing it. Uh, you will have to invest in some additional detailed design. It, it sounds like there's already been some done, probably with the rough grading package. So you got that, you know, little leg up there, I guess. But you will have to invest some time and it's probably, I would think, take a few months at least for, uh, the next rendition of an engineering plan to come together. So this is actually designing out the utilities and, you know, fine-tuning the grading plan that's already been done and, and getting things through the processes, you know? So I think, um, it'll, you're probably gonna be looking at several months out before anything could be realistically constructed. I mean, I think when we were meeting as a group, when were we thinking, construction could maybe start soonest? Do you remember?
You could maybe.
I think we said spring.
Or spring.
Spring.
Yeah, I don't know, Chelsea, with, uh, um, urban, doing the urban renewal, kind of rezoning it and, and, uh, securing the financing, if that can go, is a kind of a dual path with engineering? By the time you get there, because it is, if, if you go out for an RFQ for, for an engineer to design this, I mean, that process is probably a month, just to get them on board and then you start that design process. But, um, excuse me, I think it's, if you got dual paths going here with what you're doing to get financing and then, and then getting an engineer on board to design this thing, I mean, you're, you're a few months before you're starting much.
I will say too, though, it's probably worth getting, um, the engineering a little bit further along because they can fine-tune these costs. You know, we're just working off the, the kind of high-level master plan costs. So as design progresses, your contingency should go down, you should be getting a little bit more accurate idea. There's just less unknowns, right? There's still a lot of things that they need to figure out in design yet. So, um, as, if you can get something going forward with the engineering, it should fine-tune those costs and help give you some better direction of exactly what price tag you need to solidify.
You're talking about the full park, right? Is there not any way for us to, because I'm doing kind of the same mental math you guys are, for three to six months out now in June, that means best-case scenario to str- to start is next spring and it's more ideal to, to seed a lot of this ground in the fall. I'd rather not miss an opportunity, do whatever we need to do, this, I mean, now, literally June, July, to, to get something done so the grass can be, start, uh, to, to grow in the fall. More comprehensive planning. And, and I'm, I'm still struggling with, we keep trying to do a full plan rollout here and not a phased one, even though we're representing that here, I'm just not sure the, I, I see the value in another version of a comprehensive plan to get a full park that we don't yet have the mechanism to, to fund. And so if, I, I, I'm good with a significantly less dollar amount than we asked approval for spending on the similar amount of money, but it's gotta get us somewhere faster. So I, maybe I just need to go back through the materials that we have and I, I thought we had more of a basis to work off than we did, but.
Yeah, I, you, you're talking about four public hearings that would have to take place. You're gonna have two public hearings to amend your urban renewal plan, you have two public hearings to borrow money. By the time we get those documents ready, we're, we're gonna be a few months out already. I, I don't see a way that you could speed it up faster than that.
We could amend our capital and CIP plan.
Urban renewal plan.
Well, but I, what I'm saying is, as an alternate, we have money for the next calendar year on other CIP items. And, and just for, I, I don't know what, uh, the best-case scenario is on seeding already graded land, but a hundred or $200,000 towards that seeding in conjunction as a parallel path, like, like Chad said, to, to start a, a, a phased approach to a, a larger build-out. Is that, is that possible?
So, one quick note is that while we do have the rough grading done out there, there's still some grading work that needs to come and be done and that is not engineered yet for, to shape how the fields are actually going to be laid out. How it will drain, how, where that water coming off those is going to run.
That's the piece you're gonna be missing right now is, is the final grading plan for the fields. I think there was a rough grading plan done, I haven't seen any of those, but I would assume it's not, I, I know it's not graded to, uh, what the fields are actually gonna be to be able to seed.
Okay.
Rough grading probably gets you within six inches or so of what the, like, final ultimate grade and.
It's not gonna get you the drainage.
And, yeah, and soccer's kind of, that's kind of a critical piece to that, is make sure that you get that right. But there is a way, I think that as far as the engineering that needs to be done, there's a way to just piece out this section of it that we're now prioritizing. There's certain things that they'll have to, you know, if the utility connection's over here, they might have to like extend, um, their, kind of extend, so look a little bit further out beyond these extents to get things done. But they don't need to re-engineer the entire project. They could just focus efforts on this quadrant of it.
Okay, so I just wrote down three things here, Chelsea, the urban renewal plan work, the, the work to get the ball rolling on borrowing the money and the RFQ for engineering. Those would be the things that we would be, uh, voting to move forward, um, tonight during the work session. So why don't we just start at?
Can I, Chelsea, can you give us a little blurb about why we would do an RFQ for, uh, a separate engineering firm to look at this instead of Confluence?
We've worked with, um, Confluence and they've done a great job. I think we've, um, maybe questioned a, a little bit about the soft cost being a little bit higher. I would suggest too, that anytime you're going to do a significant capital project, that you do a qualifications-based, um, process. We have done that previously, we did that with the water tower project, we did that with the master plan. That's just my recommendation, you, there's certainly no requirement for you to go through a process that would shave off a little bit of time, but you're still gonna run into the issues with your plan amendment and borrowing money, um, taking you some time. What I could do, which might be helpful, is put together like a rough timeline for you all so you could take a look at that and I could have that ready, uh, pretty quickly, what that rough timeline would look like. But yes, so an RFQ would be my recommendation and my suggestion to the council. And I could have that available for like the next council meeting.
Thank you for spelling that out.
Okay.
Okay, so let's just, um, um, go down the line here. Rob, let's start with you, I seem to always go left, let's start right. To move forward with these three things, the urban renewal plan, uh, work to borrow the money and the RFQ for engineering.
Yeah, I guess I'll, sounds good for now, predicated on what we get back on the timeline.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mandy?
I mean, yes.
Nick? All right, Chelsea, uh, there you go. We'll move forward with those, uh, three things.
Okay.
So, um, I believe that is on, our only, um, item on the agenda. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned until six o'clock.